Get two minor edits, Mr. Chairman. And I'll share them with, uh, under number four, Jeff Allen with A E Hodson. I think that says A E A C Ace Hodsons, but I think it's A E Hodsons.
It is A E.
The firm. And under number six, we had discussion and sure, I'm assuming that means discussion ensued.
Any other changes?
No, sir. Submit motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four meeting.
Were we doing June, July twenty four?
I see and corrected, July twenty second. Motion to accept those minutes with the two edits.
And I apologize, where was the A E Hodson?
A E Hodson up here.
On the first page. Okay, thank you.
Next to June twenty sixth. Any changes?
Mr. Motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the June twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four meeting minutes as submitted.
I'm in favor too.
All right, we're gonna move on to work it out. And the first item is review and acceptance of the general ordinance in the municipal or winter. That is the second document and what Don gave us. And I think what I'd like to do, I suggest to you is go ahead and make a motion on the whole document. And secondly, let Don vote on it. And then we proceed through if there are any issues, objections. We will handle that as a amendment. So they're giving the motions of seven of the whole package and set it, no vote. And then we'll have to go through, if there's no issue, there's no amendments. But if there is an issue, create an amendment and then each amendment will be seconded and then we'll take a vote on it, either up or down. So when we're done with the total package, what have we done to the end, the changes and all our acceptors will become part of the overall vote. And so then we'll vote on the original motion. Grant standing. It's a process that helps solve it.
Just trying to change the screen here and I don't want to miss what you're saying at the same time. I want for folks to be able to see you all. Uh, so I just need a minute here, apologize.
So we're, so that just saves us for making a motion at the end with all of the possible adjustments to try to restate them.
Jamie, you understand what I'm doing?
Sorry, I'm, I, I don't know if it's my headphones or just the audio, but I'm having a really hard time understanding, um, sadly. It could be my fault, though.
Let me try again. We're gonna make a motion and second what happens to the total package, you know, the audience package. Then we're gonna review. We're not gonna vote on it till the end. As we go through, if there are issues with some part, then that will be an amendment. For that motion. And so amendment would be seconded, voted on, up or down. If it's supported, now you can pass this whole, becomes about all the total vote, vote average.
I, I think, I, I think I'm, I'm, I think I'm hearing what you're saying.
Okay.
I'll roll with it.
I want to make a motion to move or accept the total package, shut.
You need a motion? You need a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we accept the goal package.
Don made a motion by her second. Your second is, okay, now we'll go through page thirty eight. Now, does any, Don, any of this package support that or? I know there's tables in here, but they found this exercise.
The first, the first exercise is just the, yeah, and the definitions are not included in that package.
We're just doing the zoning, zoning.
Yeah, we're strictly doing the zoning ordinance from this bill all the way through. The big package of Don. And the way I'd love to proceed will make sense is to go to where the change is on. I don't know if it makes any sense unless you have an issue and we go through it, we'll leave, it was there and stop changing and we'll, that's agreeable.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So very first is page three. And it'll changes to the table of content. And I'm thinking where we've eliminated item number fourteen and we've added item number thirteen. Any issues with that?
I say so. Not everything in you eliminated in fourteen is thirteen. I'm assuming there in some other, like the mineral explorations is separate. Septic waste disposal, that's a separate, right? And stormwater runoff, so those are covered as well.
Right.
That's what I thought.
Are we okay with page three?
Um, I have a couple questions on that. One, um, I thought. Uh, maybe this was changed. I thought when we, when I was last involved with this, that we were gonna leave a category in for the. Uh, under thirteen for mineral extraction, um, with that line, again, similar to the timber harvest where it says timber harvest and. Uh, repealed, uh, mineral extraction, uh. Uh, heading would just refer it to the, um, mineral extraction ordinance, but I, I thought the plan was to leave. Uh, to leave that item in there. Uh, you know, basically a placeholder with just a reference to the, uh, to the ordinance.
Lee, that is correct. And on page thirty four, there is a reference to the new ordinance. And I believe it's in the table. Let me just double check that, but the table of contents is not correct, not reflecting that.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I thought I didn't see it in the text.
I just want to make sure it's in the table. Yes, I have noted that.
And. Yeah, I was just gonna say, there was a, uh, a couple of additional comments I had on that. Also, the, uh, the timber harvest placeholder basically said to repeal. Uh, uh, I presume the intention was to keep that placeholder, uh, only movement from, uh. From fourteen to thirteen also. And then, uh, my final comment on that was. With those changes, even without them, uh, the. The table contents, uh, and the corresponding, uh, letters in the text, uh. Need to be brought in line. They're, they're, they're not in a line. I assume the intention is to do that, but if we're commenting on what needs to be done, that needs to be done.
There's a little, little third, the third goal.
Um, right, uh, mineral extraction placeholder, timber harvest placeholder and, and section thirteen and then. The relettering of both thirteen and fourteen.
Uh, yeah, I think that could just be, because I, I think the text between thirty four and thirty nine is all correct.
Uh, yeah, I think that I would just be making a single suggestion and say reletter and include the two missing items and reletter everything to match the text in the index for that section thirteen.
Because it looks like to me that both the two things that we mentioned are both in the text are in the right order. We'll let it respond. We just need to add them to the index. So I think the only thing to really say is that the index needs to be updated to match the text. And then we're.
Do, do we need to do that with the septic waste disposal and roads and driveways, refer that to this?
Well, the, the letter changes.
Yeah.
To match the text, the letters, the letters are in the right.
The roads and driveways are.
Yeah, they're, they're all, they're all in there. They're just in the wrong letter right now.
What about septic and stormwater runoff? Just eliminating them and we're not referencing anything?
The cross references within the ordinance and the numbering and the page numbers. When you decide to go for a public hearing, I'll finalize that language and correct that. So I'm aware it's not going to be correct today.
What was the comment? Going to.
Uh, stormwater runoff is another one, septic waste.
And all that text has been deleted in the document on page forty six, forty seven.
I apologize, I'm not following.
Section fourteen.
So septic waste disposal. She go to page forty. Both eliminated in the text and they don't seem to appear anywhere else in the document.
Okay.
Guessing where those went.
And if they are some, or should we read records and then here, I guess is.
Should they be moved up to?
Yeah.
Specific activities because they are specific activities unrelated to shore land development.
Oh, no, those go up to general requirements. Yeah. Oh, yeah. They go up to general requirements and I think they're already there, right? Stormwater is there. Yeah.
Yep.
And I'm sure they're someplace.
Sanitary provisions.
Yeah.
Be accepted.
Okay, so they literally, especially on nature.
So they, they were actually.
Yeah, I thought they already existed.
Because they were there before, right? We just had them in two places.
Right, it was because I sat him in the shoreline zone, but all the set, all the, all the verbiage is exactly the same. So we said, why do?
Yeah, I got it.
So for that being, a lot of your jacket was.
So, but I'm still, I'm a little unclear, Ed, you, about the timber harvesting and the placeholder. I have it in fourteen.
And it's in thirteen, so we gotta put it in one or the other. I mean, if they could go from thirteen, we remove it to fourteen.
Uh, yeah, I believe that should be into a game because that's really, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a specific activity, but it's not totally show that.
So on page forty nine, remove L timber harvesting. And that section, that's section four. And we want to remove that, fourteen is only under section thirteen. And it's already there, so it's just duplicated.
Excuse me. Let me just double check that. Okay, yep, I see it. Okay. Thank you.
Very well. General, assuming that we get sure of the change. Yeah, I've done the comments to do that again. Don made a motion. We'll then, uh, original motion.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to have the D W. For the only shot. Did you go short? I agree with that.
I'll second.
The statement. All favors. All right, that was our first review that we did against the original motion about package. Little changes were made to the package.
So it was regarding the, uh, mineral extraction reference, timber har- harvesting. We talked about the relettering. There is a third piece that I did not get.
Or else that, uh, stormwater runoff and septic are removed and they should be removed because they exist as section twelve.
Okay.
So that was a clarification we made is that we wanted to make sure they still had a home, so they were removed from fourteen correctly.
So no change for that.
No change.
Okay, thank you.
And the letter again, Bob is correct, appears today, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I matched it up to the text, but.
Do we really move on?
Do we need Jamie's vote?
Jamie, do we agree to vote on that?
Yes. I'm a yay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll just raise your hand.
All right, moving on to. Looks like page seven.
Five. Five is just a day commended. Okay, yeah. I would say that goes with the title page that we can't put that down until it's ruled by the town council.
No. So there's no action.
This, you, we can't, we can't change that, yes, I would say.
No, I don't think I'm okay.
No, I apologize, I was trying to get the camera.
Back to days.
Yes.
We, we don't know what that.
Correct, that's why it was just X, I don't.
Okay, and more on to. November one, there's a, we eliminated C and I.
And I, I.
And I, I, I'm pretty sure.
Comment on page A is the relettering since, uh. Letter, uh, excuse me, yeah. Item C was struck, small c, was struck. Uh, the letter D at the top of page A now becomes letter C and. And consequently down the page. Uh, the, the adjustment, uh, to, uh.
To E to D.
Conversation for having removed C. So D.
Long from anything to correct.
D changes to C, E to D and F to E.
I did, thank you.
I'm sorry, any other input on the page? I'll let it take the motions.
Motion that we're gonna accept the removal of C and renumbering of D, E and F to C, D and E.
Second, second. I'm trying to. Remove your bad down.
Nope, I got that. Thank you.
Moving on. Okay, I got twelve on that. Charles, thank you. All favors?
I'm raising my hand.
I see it. Thank you, Dan Curtis.
Yeah, we're gonna go up. I see twelve, that's correct.
Yeah.
We got eleven for the housing overlay and we renumbered.
I think we just corrected five. I think that might have just been missing.
Okay. There's a slot for other ones there.
Yeah.
Any else on twelve? Motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the edits on page twelve.
Uh, I see we got across our show and we'll see you then.
Yeah.
All favors?
I'm in favor.
Uh, I have a quick question on that one, not the, why, the, uh, the, uh, affordable housing overlay that, I guess I didn't hear that one discussed. That's absolutely getting asked now.
The council adopted it and it applies to areas where there's sewer and water.
Okay.
The density bonus. And so they did officially adopt that.
We have an official, I saw, we told. So we now have an official, okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Thirteen is just a small. Fourteen, uh, page fourteen in the middle, number two, that's a small.
Oh, yeah.
Edit.
And, uh. Um, again, there's no change. Your favor, but it will only make. One, three, one change, whatever we have in, down to.
Yeah.
Okay. Next. I see eighteen. Is eighteen in there?
Seventeen. Seventeen as, as a, just an editorial change. Of what we call on the table.
Oh, I see, yeah. True, I am knowing.
Yeah, we changed that at table two.
Wrong way with our.
Do we, I, I think I'd mentioned this the last time we talked about changing that. Do we need a definition? I think we need a definition of what shore areas are.
It did include one because I, I remember that conversation and there is a definition, of course, you have to prove it, but I did create one.
Gotcha.
In the definition section.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
No change, I'm gonna continue on what we said. And same page on eighteen, right? They being the same thing?
For the title on T B on there.
Yes, we'll all tear with that. No objection. Okay, moving to nineteen.
Have a question on nineteen, uh, the footnote, that's the, uh, bottom of table two. Uh, it appears that footnote number one has been struck, uh, leaving only one footnote, which is now number two, uh, is, is. It, well, maybe not critical, but, uh. Would it be maybe appropriate to go back and re, readjust that footnote as item and make it one to?
May I?
It's, it's just above table three.
So.
Yes, yes, the, the footnotes, the footnotes of table two. Shows two footnotes, not one.
You said, okay, we're gonna reference, um, the separate ordinance for the mineral extraction. And so when doing that, I saw that the first footnote was for specifically for, um, marijuana establishment, so. I just took the liberty to change it so that all terms that applied to outside ordinances would be referred out. I didn't renumber that. So they, it should be one, if you find it's acceptable, that would strike that language and make it.
Change call.
Correct.
Back to table two. There are changes. Do you have any suggestions for the table?
My other question, this is a, a discussion question, is line forty two, electric generation projects. Uh, why is it no for general residential and village, but planning board for the rest?
Cook those from the ordinance.
That's what the existing one was?
It should have come from the existing ordinance.
Didn't it just?
Yeah.
It just seemed odd to me that all other generations has planning board and those two are excluded. And I don't know why. It a forbidden activity within the general residential zone? And that's why it's no?
Oh, it could be that it's not allowed.
Yeah, that's.
Whole project, yeah.
And we'll move back up to, on table two. You show four being struck.
Yeah.
And five and all to ten.
Yeah, this is outside, truly.
Yeah.
Ten to twenty fives.
Oh, yeah, that needs to be numbered, doesn't it?
Yeah, everything needs to be numbered, that's where we're at.
Who approves ten to twenty five?
Well, anything.
Or up to ten.
Yeah, greater than ten goes to code enforcement.
Under ten, you don't have to, okay.
Right.
Got it.
It's in the shore loan, shoreline.
Yes.
Or shore area.
Yes, outside.
Yeah. Are we okay with that?
The mobile home, then. What's it need, yes, general residential?
So any word says yes, means that it's permitted.
Okay.
Um.
So who approves it?
Uh, it probably should say CEO.
If it says yes, it's, it doesn't require permit.
Well, it's, it's a good point. It should be CEO because a single family home requires a permit.
You wouldn't want somebody just move a mobile home in, not at least a CEO.
Where previously they were not allowed, they are allowed now, but that doesn't.
No, it's not.
Not true to you?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so you, but it needs, yes and no one, they're just.
I'm, I will change it to CEO, which is the same as single family, two family. It is not exempt from, from permitting.
All right. Yeah, my understanding on that table, anytime they would say yes, like you did, you have to have.
That's what I was, so I do that. That's how I was interpreting.
Yes.
Like, no, sure, we should go. And on line fifteen, which is not gonna be.
Yeah.
So we're gonna renumber all of that table for the one.
So earth moving less than ten yards, those should be yes, because they don't need any of the, right?
Right.
Okay. Got it.
But signs, don't we have assigned ordinance?
We do, and I find this interesting.
If we say yes there, wouldn't it have to be code enforcement officer?
The way it's been done is if you meet the requirements of the ordinance. You, you can just do it, which I don't, I wouldn't advocate that, um, because there's no documentation when the things are grandfathered and. So right now you don't need a permit, you just need to follow the ordinance for signs. That's the way it's been applied.
Okay.
So that would be a point of discussion in my mind if you want to continue that way.
Just because the guy downtown that built the sign and it didn't follow our ordinance. And he had it up there for over a year and I gave Mark crap for it, like every meeting. Um, just saying like, when are you gonna go get that? You gotta shut a sign off because it can't flash that often. It was, you know, the big flashing lights and you can't have that. It's not allowed in the ordinance. Um, so, and, and if you would have asked permission, I think Mark would have said, okay, this sign meets the ordinance or doesn't meet the ordinance. I hate to say it needs a building permit, but to me it kind of should. If people can just put up a sign and not follow the ordinance and then there's no. Action that can be done except Mark has to give them a cease and desist or you have to remove that.
I, I think a sign permit application, um, in photos, if they take photos of the sign for the record, would, at a minimum, would be helpful.
Mark, Mark could do a pretty soft approval if they're like, yeah, I'm putting the sign up, they showed what they're putting up, fine, that's no problem.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, what he requires is fine, but to me that should be code enforcement. That shouldn't just be, anybody can put up, it kind of implies just because it says yes, anybody can put up a sign anywhere. No, we have actually a sign ordinance. You can't just do that. So at least if you go to Mark, they have to make sure the sign meets the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Just like putting a building up. I mean, it's a little bit minor, but to me, I guess I'd propose we change that to code enforcement officer for all of them.
Uh, comment on that, I, I, I think the way, the reason I listed the way it is, I think that's kind of like I said, uh. Before we had the sign ordinance, that I was here when we did the sign ordinance and, uh. I think what we did is we neglected to change the. Go back to the table and, uh. Make any adjustment there. And now in hindsight, uh, I think you might want to consider one or two things. One, either requiring a CEO permit, uh, for the sign, uh, and applying a sign ordinance or. Potentially leaving it a yes, but noting that the, there is a sign ordinance that. Must apply.
So just change the order, change that to the one, put the, well, if we're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. That way you have to redo the two.
And it just be, and then it would just be yes.
Uh, yeah, you could say yes and then footnote that, that. You know, see sign ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, that way. But, uh, um, that way you don't have to have a permit. But it's letting you know that, yes, we do have an ordinance and you better. Pay attention.
So I am two signs. Yes, it's out there for out there. And relying on a sudden note directly to the sign office, that I'm on.
I think so, yes.
All right, and then down on.
Okay, I have a question on that, though. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I have a question. So would that also apply to like? Simple signs, like how everybody's putting out like political signs right now because. That we certainly.
Political science is in the ordinance. I'm not saying it's followed a hundred percent of the time, it's not. It's supposed to be, you know, you're supposed to have certain sizes and that stuff. I know it's in the ordinance. You can put out political signs, but they can treat them in a certain amount of time and stuff like that.
Statutes, yeah.
There's there's.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
On the signs. On the signs, just real quick, getting back to your comment, Greg. Do we know and does it make sense to maybe talk to Mark and see how many issues he's had related to people putting signs up that aren't following the ordinance? To me, that's again, I I think that's a pretty simple, straightforward thing that if someone wants a sign, they've got to come and talk to the CEO and get a permit from him and he releases it that way to make sure that whatever gets put up is in accordance with the.
Yeah, I can't think, I mean, the ordinance.
The ordinance.
Pretty loose. One of the only big things in there is it just can't flash. Um, and their sign was flashing.
So. Is there such a thing as? Let's say I want to. Do ten yards of or less than ten yards of earth moving. Is there something that says you could discuss that with the CEO without having to pay for a permit?
You can always do that.
Yeah.
Works for the town.
Because. I. I was confused and I'm sure other people are, you know, it's not just what you dig out of the ground, it's what.
What you do.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh. So if you just tell me I have ten yards, you do it, you don't have to talk to anybody, you know. Next thing you know, somebody's reporting.
Well, but I think then they got to prove that it's more than ten yards.
Yeah.
If you wait and there's, you know, AT dump trucks piled up of dirt and go, hey, that's that's clearly more than ten yards. If they're at eleven, it's going to be pretty tough to prove. So.
So, uh, going to the page eighteen, table two. Uh, anything we, the sound we have changed the ones in the zone right now, right? I understand fourteen, you mean, yeah?
No, no CEO.
So that's a change.
Yes.
I'll add a portion to that.
Make a motion that we change that to CEO. Possible by the way.
Second.
All favor. Yeah, here.
I'm in favor as well.
And we're adding a sign for signs and renumbering the footnote to one everywhere. Say it's a separate annual ordinance.
Actually, I put the. So we're going to renumber all the items. So that's part of the motion.
Yeah, as an order of corrections for renumbering all of the lines and changing the footnote from a two to a one and adding the one, the footnote one to signs.
Okay, and then and forty-one, forty-two, forty-two.
Yeah, yeah, those are, yeah.
Second, who made this?
I will.
All favors? Yeah. Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Then moving on down to table three. Dimensional requirements.
Um, I can just start by saying, I know you know what I'm already going to say, that I am not in favor in. Decreasing the lot size in the rural zone and I am not in favor of making it ten feet versus twenty for side and rear setback.
He is not. She has not been.
And. Good point.
He's muted still.
Are you talking to me? Hello? He's good day. Hey, can anybody hear me?
I I do agree with the side and rear setbacks, leaving those to twenty. We do have limited commercial, general, commercial, industrial all of twenty, so I don't see that as inconsistent. The lot size, since we're changing the lot size everywhere, I'd be in favor of keeping the lot size to forty thousand across the board just for consistency more than anything. Um, it's still just a minimum lot size. It doesn't mean that. It's going to change that much, um. And I mean, do we really have a rural zone? Compared to residential, we, I guess. Sort of, but I kind of don't view it that way. So. My assessment is to just make it forty across the board. Uh, I would be in favor of leaving the twenty-foot side and rear setbacks. Just because they exist in other zones unless we wanted to change it to ten across the board, just to be consistent.
Greg, what are your thoughts on resource, shoreline and stream protection? Reducing lot size there.
I'm fine.
So those are the resources we are charged.
Yep.
With protecting.
Yep, and.
And you're and you're going to increase density in those areas.
Potentially, but the average lot size is is well under that right now. The average lot is under twenty thousand square foot right now. And. Those are great public lots.
Right.
So this would be new lots would be limited at forty thousand.
Or eighty thousand.
They, or or eighty, that's true, yeah, or whatever we wanted to change it to. So absolutely. And and if they have to do a subdivision, they have to come to us with a subdivision plan that handles phosphorus, handles the storage, handles all the areas. So their lots are not going to be forty thousand, or at least. They're not going to equally space forty thousand square foot lots because of the required green soil. And the required water. So I'm not overly concerned with those, um. In those areas because again, I think. The lot size is not really what concerns me as much as the phosphorus load, and that has more to do with impervious cover and how they're dealing with their septic and where they're putting their septic and. That sort of thing. And and I think the lot size of eighty thousand used to be because an old school septic system needed a lot of land. The new baffle systems really are very small by comparison and do a much better job than the older system. Now, they have been around for fifty years, so we don't know what they'll do in the future, but if our concern is stormwater is is second runoff. Having small lots is not going to really impact us. And with the new accessory dwelling structure. We just increased the density whether we liked it or not. So forty thousand is still a one acre lot, which is still pretty big. So.
It wasn't worth my property on the west side. Or which, right after all the town. But in the ten, in the, um. Uh, greenest field. Were the, um. Um, in the back, very nice little lot.
Yeah.
A lift station. There was five, who was able to save my grandfather. So. I've actually done on four thousand square foot. That's awesome.
Yeah.
On the rental, so.
And comment on, uh, if you're looking at changing any, uh, lot size minimums on the shores of all that, we. Keep in mind the state has minimums that. You know, you can't go over their minimums. I don't recall. Uh, the state language on that. I believe we pretty much duplicated it in the ordinance, but. Uh, I'm not going to sit here and say I know exactly what it was. Uh, considering any, any reduction through the zone, um, I think I feel close with the state ordinance, but, yeah.
And just forty thousand as well above its minimum. I mean, it still have to take impervious cover. There's a lot of other factors to put in play, so it'd be still tough. To build on a certain size and shape, uh, forty thousand square foot lot. That's why I wasn't overly worried about it.
Yeah.
Just like the other protections in place, not being able to build within a hundred feet of the water. That's going to limit your lot size and you got the impervious cover and you've got to deal with your driveway, you know, all of the other factors. I'm not, it's not saying it's guaranteed you can build on a forty thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, I already is. We have a hundred foot front on the. Typically, you end up with a drainage field way back, I'm sure, because of the size of the lot. Way difficult.
Yeah.
Just a pattern matter here. So relative to table. Um, do I have a motion to change where we show on the table? I think I hear you saying that, Greg.
Well, the only thing that Jamie was suggesting and I was just opening it up for everybody was. You know, the the side and rear setbacks is bringing them back to the original twenty. Um. In the rural zone and and just because we leave them, so I would go one of two mines, either put them ten everywhere. Or leave them in twenty for that zone, just like we do in general, general, commercial and industrial.
And and the rest of the table will stand as a state.
And the only reason for that is because the rural could be anything. Right? They can do industrial work and they just have to come to us for those uses because they need a conditional use permit because they're going inside their rural zone can essentially accommodate anything.
Well, I understand that the 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 tables. Which you're suggesting, the table which you're saying, except for rural. And then except actually all which one.
Well, it'd be, yeah, tho- those were proposed, change to ten for rural. And I was, I was saying, I was in agreement. If Jamie pushes that, I would be in agreement to say I would agree with that. But I, she wants to change the rural lot size factor eighty, and I was a fan of making it forty, really, probably more than anything for consistency across the town. Um, I think, you know, if we were going to make one eighty, rural would make the most sense. But just being. Consistent, I think, helps us in enforcing our ordinances. But I could be persuaded either way, and I'm not saying I'm, that's just my opinion. So.
So rushing to the table three, which is what's left on page nineteen. Does anyone want to make a motion to? Change the minimum setbacks to twenty, twenty, twenty. As you were, uh, as you have now.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject. In, so I wasn't here during the original discussions regarding these lot size, but I do want to point out that since. Since you had those, the the comprehensive plan has been updated and adopted, and I don't know if this was in the original one. I didn't, I apologize. I didn't think to look, but. In the current comprehensive plan, under land use on page two seventy, it does state, uh, eight point one says, when considering lot size reduction, to do not reduce. Lot sizes in public water resource protection, shoreline and stream protection districts. So this is advisory, but we have to be consistent with this. So I don't know if that was on the books when you started that discussion, but I. I do need to point it out now.
So it was not very. Be aware. Take shade. Raise your hand.
Yep, no. We're not going to make any changes to this.
You're no more. And she, I'm going on, I have a. Change of the. If you want to make a move, we're still having to do.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, I think consistent with what John just said, I still have concerns regarding resource protection, shoreline zone, stream protection, uh, and public water supply, and I would. Uh, make a motion that we leave those lot sizes back at eighty thousand square feet where they were originally. And on the minimum setbacks, um. I think we should move those back to where they were as well, except for in the rural, rural zone. At ten feet.
I just want to confirm vacation. Was public water included in that in town?
It was a broad reference, a a public water district was correct. Do not reduce lot sizes in public water, resource protection, shoreline and stream protection districts. And again. I I didn't go back and look at the previous plan and see if this is new, but it does state in the current plan.
Right, and I don't think that was in place. Originally proposed changing.
I guess not.
Okay, so and Brendan, you're suggesting to follow the council plan and leave lot sizes. Original size. But what do we do with? The roadside and street setback? Are you proposing to leave all of those as the original, the crossed out numbers? Or to go with the revised numbers?
With the original numbers with the exception of rural. And I would agree that those at ten feet.
Yeah. The one point I'll make is, one of the issues that we have is the road setback. Um, especially in resource protection in shoreline. Because as you have to set back from the road, that means you're closer to the water. So I'm not a big fan of that one being forty feet. I'd be a bigger fan if it was a smaller distance. Um, side and rear, I could, I could, I I could take or leave however, but. That's my only point for road setback, I feel like should be set at twenty feet. Because I'd rather have the. Structure closer to the road in in ninety-nine percent of the cases where it's sloping from the road to the resource. Not the other way around. So I think having. Having it closer to the road is better unless you happen to be on the other side of the road. That's the only time I would say I want it further back. So does that make sense?
It it does make sense.
Can can I comment on that one as well? Um, that. Has precisely been a battle we've fought numerous times on board that. Uh, someone wants to do something or two and. And the sort of battle between, we're trying to. Get them away from the water.
Yep.
Uh, but we've got to. Overput. Setback from the road and the ZBA doesn't really want to. Play with that and, yeah, and like you said, we all feel that. Being close to the road is not a real action. Being close to the water obviously is is. Hurting the fawns. So.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess as as it progresses, I would support. I would support a ten foot setback from from the road. Twenty is probably a good.
I think twenty was just to make it consistent with all the others.
Yeah.
That was really, I guess, my thoughts. I'm a big fan of consistency. And just making it twenty across the board, except for the village, which is zero. Leave that as it is. Well, restate that as a motion that you guys can take if they believe it. I would make a motion that we not make any changes, um, to the lot size. And we do make a change to the road, street setback. Um, from forty feet to twenty feet for all four zones highlighted. And that we do make the change for. Um. Rural side and rear setback to ten as stated in the table.
I'll second that motion.
Wait a minute. Sides and the rear are going to be ten?
For rural, no, for rural, for rural to match the other, to match the 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 village, the public water. Uh, I guess I'm confused.
Well, let me try it out. You can say leave a lot size alone as a wishing war.
Yeah.
Not with the state.
All cheese.
Yep. Column. We don't change it.
Right.
From what it is. And I'm moving all the roads, road, street setback. You have a holding, you're going to motion that. Resource, shoreline. Stream protection, public water. Uh, generalism is already telling you, limiting from one, twenty, twenty, and you leave rural one. Now, side, side, uh. You go to ten on. One, two, three, four, five of them. The limited commercial be twenty, general twenty, industrial twenty, village ten, and rural one. Am I right so far?
Or ten.
I'm sorry?
Accepting rural at ten.
Yeah.
Rural at the temple.
Yeah.
Okay. And the rear yard would be ten, 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 ten. Twenty, 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 ten? Ten?
Yeah, yes.
So what changed?
So the tens over here on side yard, rear yard are going to stay the same. What we got?
Well, you've changed a lot, typical lot size over there.
Right.
So the motion, as I understand, the lot size they're saying now currently. The setbacks changed as stated in the table?
Correct.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
I don't know that I understood, the, I thought the lot change. Are the lot sizes going to be what's represented in the table?
That they originally were, so I'm.
That they originally were, okay.
Eighty thousand, eighty thousand, eighty thousand, forty, 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 thirty-five hundred.
So the with sewer and without sewer is gonna be back in there or not?
Think we're elim- eliminating with sewer altogether, aren't we? And just having, and without sewer, and just having minimum lot size for those reach, with those specific.
Yeah, that column. You're not changing.
Zones.
You're eliminating.
Yeah, we were just eliminating that.
That's, that's not going back the way it was originally.
I, I stand corrected, so the, we are eliminating with sewer column.
Why? It was in the original one. We said we were gonna go back to the way it was.
And I made a mistake.
Oh. So we are.
I'm trying, I'm trying to state what Greg's motion.
So we are changing that.
So, under minimum lot size, with sewer, all is going away, the whole column going away.
Alright, I got it.
And then under, without sewer, I just went down through eighty, 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 forty, 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 thirty-five out of eighty. In other words, the state doesn't have it right now.
So rural is not going down this way.
We don't. You don't need without sewer.
Well, those lots are small.
There's gonna be no differentiation.
Yeah, sewer or no sewer.
Right.
So the heavy should be different.
The heavy will be just lot size.
Just minimum lot size.
And, and we'll, no discussion of that.
And that, the without sewer and mid-swear already crossed that.
Take those out, yep.
Uh, moving over minimum, what did you, what did you rather, those are ten. So no change here, I'm moving over min- minimum setback. You're going with twenty, 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 right?
Yeah, with a zero in that.
Zero, yep.
A zero, yeah, I'm sorry. Side yard, you're going with a ten, 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 twenty, 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 ten, ten.
Correct.
You with me, Don?
Yep.
Really, uh, you're going with ten, 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 twenty, 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 ten, ten.
Yes.
Everybody understand?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And shoreline, none of the others changed.
None is.
That's the, that is the motion in the second, and he throws the shot. All in favor? All voting. Jimmy?
I'm right, I am opposed.
You're voting?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Read up on nineteen, Don, you have it all way in. Okay.
I believe I have it.
Moving on. The twenty. Any issues on page of the verbiage on page twenty? Page twenty-one, we're renumbering. We have five, six, seven. That's okay. Any issues on page twenty-one? Okay, I assume that, that's staying the way it's stated. Alright, we're moving on. Twenty-two looks okay, like three looks okay. And four looks okay, and five looks okay. I'm all aware of the twenty-seven, is that right?
Yep.
Twenty-seven, got those sanitary divisions. Page twenty-seven.
I believe that's the. Just the exact verbiage of a move from the other section and the rest one.
Okay, so twenty-seven, number two. Nothing on twenty is the, nothing on twenty nine. Nothing on thirty, nothing on thirty-one. Nothing on thirty-two, oh wait, there's something up top. Top of thirty-two, uh, another, a lot of shade. Or Greg?
I made a note, that Greg had made a note, that's not the actual suggested language, I apologize, I just didn't want it to fall off the radar.
Yeah, minimum lot size shall be two thousand square feet. For the first unit and fifteen hundred square feet for additional units, provided that there is no expansion of the existing structure. So what that tells us, if somebody wanted to rebuild, let's say, use the mill and convert that to housing. They would actually be able to do that, because for every two thousand square feet, in other words, the, the, uh. Consolidated building downtown. Right, so that building was essentially like twelve hundred square, twelve thousand square feet on the first floor, twelve thousand square feet on the second floor. With the way the ordinance is written, they can only have one unit or two units on the first floor, and then they can have a number of units on the second floor. But it really limits them because. It doesn't make any sense to limit them, just because we have this weird twenty, that ten thousand minimum. So, and I'm, what I'm saying is that if we make that smaller, we'll allow them to convert that to apartments. At a rate of two thousand, it's kind of like the default, and then it's fifteen hundred thereafter. It doesn't mean they have to make them that big, that's just the most they can have. And it's saying without expanding the building, so we can't ma- add stories, we're not expanding it back, we're just saying reusing existing buildings. The only time this applies, so really, that's the consolidated building, the subway building, the big mill. Those kind of buildings, it's only existing buildings that are going to be a factor here.
And then new buildings would, would have to meet the thirty-five. Hundred square feet.
They have to have a whole nother standard, yeah, there's a whole nother standard for new, for new construction.
So what do we recommend, and break out of the first question?
Well, just minimum lot size shall be two thousand, not ten thousand. Square feet for the first unit and fifteen hundred square feet for the additional unit. So really, it's only changing the ten thousand to two thousand, if everybody's kind of in agreement to that.
I'll make a motion.
I will make a motion that we change the ten thousand to two thousand.
Fine.
I'll say.
Mr. Chairman? All in favor?
Yeah, a little discussion, please, uh, so help, so help me understand, so we're looking at grandfathered structures.
Yeah. Repurposing grandfathered structures on.
To allow more. Smaller lot size, so you, to encourage development in those buildings?
Yeah, so it could be used, otherwise, they have to have a large commercial space of ten thousand square feet. They can't be converted into just residential.
Okay.
Because you have to have a commercial space of ten thou. So especially some of the buildings like down, if you go from the subway down those view cellular buildings, some of those other buildings. If you take out and says ten thousand square feet, that's the first two floors, they can't, they can have one unit. Because the total building is probably only twelve thousand square feet. So they can have a total of one apartment in the entire building.
Okay.
And that just doesn't really make, unless it's grandfathered, and that's the thing, is there's buildings down there, the subway building already had a bunch of apartments. So it could be restored to apartments.
Okay.
But if you didn't have that already, sort of like looking at the mill, looking at the consolidated building, they just rehab the consolidated building. But they can't make it apartments. Because it's not cost effective to have two apartments.
Was this done originally to? Prevent? That, trying to develop the commercial part of it for the time?
I think they were trying to keep it commercial, but I think it was. Probably also, they didn't have the piece at the end, I don't think it was necessarily it's. I thought we kind of changed that, that it's only for existing structures.
So, we could potentially end up with a whole bunch of apartments building downtown?
Potentially.
But this only implies the buildings existing, right?
Right.
They have nothing to do with.
Which is most of the buildings downtown.
Right. So this wouldn't apply at all to.
No, 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 but I'm talking about the existing downtown.
Right.
Where we're trying to bring small businesses in.
Right.
To attract people. If it's all apartments, you're, you're gonna lose all that.
It's common for towns to regulate the first floor as being commercial only, and then the upper. Stories as residential, and just to Greg's example is perfect, because the subway building. He came in originally with twelve units for that, and he ended up with, I think, seven, under the current zoning, so. And then that other building that you referenced there, they've been waiting to see if something changes, so they can do residential units.
But, but what we're saying here, he could kick US seller and subway right out of there, make apartments.
Yeah, for sure, but I mean, commercial space is generally going to be massively higher in price than residential. So put two apartments in there instead of US cells, will probably not be cost effective. But.
I was just trying to figure out one that. It's one thing I could.
Uh, just one comment on that, I think. If you want to attract. Lots of small businesses downtown, that if you have, uh. A lot more apartments there. Small businesses are gonna wanna be there. The service, the folks that are there. Uh, and like you said, the, the ground floor is typically gonna be the. Commercial, the small business area, and. You know, the apartments, the second, third floors and so on. You know, it makes, it makes sense that. You're trying to build up the downtown, and there's opportunity for apartments, and there's need for, uh, apartments. Sounds like a win-win to me.
Yeah, I agree with the question, I think that's great. Just concerned it.
Well, the other thing, that point was, I, I don't believe they're gonna kick out the businesses, they're gonna.
Yeah, they're gonna get a little bit.
They're gonna draw, they're gonna draw more in.
Yep. I mean, and fifteen hundred square feet is still a massive, massive apartment.
That's a good balance.
You know, that's, that's still not. Not limiting, you know, but that just gives them the ability to use that, so if you wanted to say. If you went to the place and saying, okay, we wanna reserve first floor for commercial. And you can have apartments on any upper or lower floor, that would be fine, but I'd say we wanna shrink that fifteen hundred number smaller.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because that's, that's a very big apartment, I'm not sure how small, but definitely a thousand or less. Because, you know, a two-bedroom apartment at a thousand square feet is a pretty good-sized place.
We s- we specify parking spaces, wasn't that an issue somewhere?
Ordinance, so it does have to apply, they have to meet the parking demand.
Okay, so do, or do we need to go back and revisit that?
I don't think so, because that, they have to meet that order bill, so they have to have the land to have the park. So that's gonna be, so there's two living factors, right now, it's the building size and it's parking. They have to have both, right now, on the way our ordinance is written, I look at that as a challenge for business. A challenge to put apartments, because we have several businesses downtown. They cannot put enough apartments upstairs to really make it cost effective to rehab their building, to put apartments on the second, the third floor.
But is that all for naught if the parking requirements are still restricted?
I mean, but we're not changing the parking requirement, so they still need to meet the parking requirements. So for X numbers, whatever it is, it's, it's a number of spaces for every apartment that they have, and then there's a surge. Off beyond that, but that's needed for commercial as well as residential.
I'll leave it.
So I, I, I mean, if they don't have the land, they don't have the land. To do parking.
No, I, I, yeah, I get that, but if you're making provisions for their existing grandfathered structure, that you're gonna allow them to do greater, higher level of density in that building. I'm just thinking about, you're not, you may not be able to accomplish that if you don't have parking for it anyway.
You may not, but the town does have some, um, because parking is owned by the town.
Okay.
Not a lot, but there's enough, we'll say that, oh, it's town parking, and I don't know if that counts for residential or not.
So we have a motion on the second? Sheriff, I'm good. It's all in favor? All voting?
I am in favor.
So for clarification, it's two thousand? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Change, change is.
That was the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, nothing on thirty-three?
No, there's a bunch of thirty. Cluster development. Okay, this is something that we changed, um, again, cluster development must have water and sewer. Are there, are we okay with, are there any? So we were proposing to make a change, and I wanna make sure that everybody's okay with that before we say yes. So we looked at Waterville, it's, um, seventy-five hundred square feet, there's a couple other towns that are in the range of five thousand. Um, we kind of went round and round on this, and said, you know, what's the size of cluster development? You know, that's, yeah.
It's going.
And we landed on a number, I think everybody is somewhat, and, and realize this is a very small area of Winthrop, because they cannot have public water and sewer. So it's not a lot of area that you're talking about putting cluster development. And this was specifically to address the proposed project up behind Ace Hardware. Cumberland Barnes and Ace Hardware property, where he wanted to develop that land, and said, you know, twenty thousand square foot lot doesn't make any sense, and. You know, when we looked at it and kind of looked into it, we agreed and said, that's. Not really ideal, and I don't think this will cause any. Big changes, because there's really not a whole lot of lands that's. That's, that's not on public water and sewer right now, that you're gonna develop, because it already did, so.
Do, do we need to amend table three on dimensional requirements for minimal lot sizes and setbacks to include clustered residential development? I don't see it on table three now.
I don't know if it was ever on, maybe it should have been.
I mean, given that we're specifying setbacks and lot, minimal lot size. Uh, back on to page nineteen. Um.
Yeah.
In reference to.
It's its own category, but it's not. It's a specific activity. Yes, it's, and, and right at the top of thirteen, in the following quarters shall apply. Those either basically. I would say exempt from the table. That you have multi, you have trailer parks, you have multi-family dwelling units. You have Route two oh two development, you have cluster development. And accessory dwelling unit that we had to add. So cluster development is kind of another.
Yeah, that, that's not really a.
They all fall.
District.
Out of our tables.
Uh, yeah.
Gotcha.
That, that's a good question, because. Uh, I guess you can make the argument that, yes, that's outside of the table.
Right.
The table applies.
Yeah.
Except where cluster development allows different things.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess the whole expression right now, the J's now on the magic number of fifteen and a half. Can we adapt that one, which?
And just one more, one more time, so Greg, you, you, did you or Dawn look at other ordinances, I think you said Waterville had?
Yeah, Waterville seventy-five hundred, there's a bunch that are five thousand. Cluster development's very common, and the big distinction with cluster development is that it, it must have water and sewer.
Got it.
So that's, that's the big distinction about cluster development.
Yeah.
So we said here in Winthrop, that's a pretty limited area that you can develop, and it seems to make sense to say, yeah, you could do cluster development. In those areas, because you already have waters.
Got you, thank you.
You know, we, we had checked that one out for.
We did.
Subway.
Yeah, and I pulled a bunch of ordinances, and, and there's a lot of towns that did not have cluster development.
Right.
So, um, a lot of towns, well, Waterville was one that was, I know it was nearby, that's why I told theirs and used theirs as a template.
What, what was there?
It's seventy-five hundred, yeah, so.
We don't know matching number.
No, there was a couple, the state, this, the state template was five.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of towns that had five at Southern. Uh, so Augusta has five thousand.
Why would we go with five?
We can, that was, we, we talked about this like two years ago, and we went round and round, and that was the number we landed on, that's. Only reason we landed, because I think, I don't think Jamie was happy with the number, and I think we talked about what's in the middle, and there was a number of us that commented. So I think we kind of went, okay, we'll go a little bit bigger, but not. Not, not, not up to the full twenty thousand, but we'll kind of compromise around eight thousand square feet, so.
Okay, let me go ahead with that. I think it's probably pretty good. Yeah, and a lot of. It's much up against the report. And while development, I can name. It was back to the, from, well, drawing, it's actually back. We're having a house, it's a short, it's a wall.
Running through it?
No.
Yeah, no, they have to add it, and that would be, yeah, yeah.
So that is.
Yep.
Good.
Yep. But I mean, it's, realize the cost of adding that is probably a few hundred thousand dollars. So, but, they could be done.
No. Actually, that's what they're gonna do up on the hills.
Well, that's exactly, but that's, that was because the landowner was a plumber, yes, you know, I could, I could do this, and it's. Gonna be cost effective for him to do that, so.
So on the motion to. Three, the eight thousand fifty.
Accept the changes as written on the page. I'll make a motion to accept the changes as written on the page.
Here's I.
Absolutely.
Okay. Sure. All in favor? All in. Change.
I'm in favor.
The rating wave, I mean.
Rating, yeah, rating.
On thirty-four. It's all struck, right?
Except for H is just represented in the actual mineral extraction ordinance, so, which is fine.
You'll be okay with that?
And I think that's, that's all the way down through.
In five?
Well, most like campground grounds still on here, and the campgrounds are copy and pasted. But they came from fourteen and we moved them to thirteen, but that, that wasn't changed, that was just a copy and paste, and J as well.
Sure, we'll pay with thirty-four, thirty-five.
Um, comment on thirty-four, actually. I noticed in the, uh, item G accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit uh, is in the text, uh, it is not in oh, no, it is in the, uh, yeah. I was thinking it was not in the, uh, table content, but it is, the mineral extraction was the one that was.
Yeah, we had to add that accessory dwelling on, uh, that was the stage.
So I am sure we're okay with thirty-four, thirty-five. Moving on to thirty-six. More the same.
More copy and paste, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I should be okay with thirty-six, moving on to thirty-seven. More copying, maybe.
Until you start.
Moving on to thirty-eight. More copying, maybe. Moving on to thirty-nine. Motion, I've shown that the vote issue should have been not. Correct. Well, I was under Harvard's name, we.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I will.
That was the fourteen, we just moved it up to thirteen, and it's exactly the same.
I'm moving to forty. Forty-one. Forty-two. Forty-three. We're on forty-four, more additions. That will be campground, and that's what here. Moves to thirty, we're done. No, we're forty-four, forty-five, more the same. Forty-six.
It is.
In most cases here, nothing's been eliminated, it's just been relocated.
Right.
Right. Yes.
Forty-seven. Forty-eight.
Forty-nine. Forty-nine, Timber Harvest State.
Yep, remove Timber Harvest State review.
Was relocated.
Yep.
And then the lettering, uh, starting with
All those, yeah.
Clear removal of vegetation, but it's not is D and C M, I'm going to do that. And I'm sure there's such, such a question. Yeah, they wrote a letter, yeah, it's all nation-based.
Mm-hmm.
Fifty. Fifty-one. Fifty-two. Fifty-three.
I'd like comment on fifty-three, which is that leads to
Okay.
That leads to a fairly major task. And that's, uh, reviewing and redoing all the citations. Because, uh, uh, page fifty-three, exceptions to section fourteen M and no longer fourteen M and fourteen D.
And all have changed.
Yeah. And, uh, so that, that whole section needs to be changed, but there are many citations now that we're referring to. Yeah, uh, section fourteen or thirteen or whatever, that, that those have been changed and, uh, this, this is not, uh, I didn't spot check everything, but it looks like those citations have not been updated yet. So that, uh, uh, you know, that needs to be done, and I, I, uh, I assume you might want to consider in motion to update all citations, that just as a catch-all motion, but it, it appears that that need to be done.
And that should be a sub, uh, motion.
Yeah, yeah, right, uh, yeah, the method to the original motion, that's that motion.
And a pin motion would do that.
Yes, I'll make a motion that all of the, the references in the document be um, checked and adapted to the new, to make sure they refer to the correct section.
Right.
Second.
The sky. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to fifty-four. Fifty-five. Moving on to sixty-six. This is the over in the conversation for overall things to move over.
Right.
So fifty-seven, same thing?
Yeah, we removed and relooking?
Yeah. Fifty-seven, same way?
Yeah, we just need to re, re, start relabeling the, the numbers again, the letters.
Do I need to take an overall exercise when you get the whole?
Correct, the renumbering and the citations are before we post it to public hearing, because it has to be the actual.
All of them. Yeah, now fifty-nine.
Yep.
I want comment on fifty-nine, uh, uh, permit required be section, uh, item number four there. Uh, reference to the zoning board appeals, and then it's referred to a BCA, which should be ZDA, I believe.
Hmm, sorry, on BDA. That doesn't exist, or it might be.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, so, I've heard of it a little since I left.
I think that's a little. It's a little dangerous, I think. And we, we discussed at the top, right, and said all members may, uh, or everybody.
Yeah, I got your thoughts, right? Well, but we, we, it's not like anybody has a problem.
I think we discussed it.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
So, yeah, I'm a little slow here, but three, uh, excuse me, four. The V, VZA should be the ZDA.
ZDA, I believe that's should be ZDA.
Thank you. Yeah, but one of the fifteen.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. This was not discussed. This is regarding where I, um, yeah, crossed out hearing and putting meeting. The, the state does not require a public hearing, and I'm not clear. This, I put this in here as a question for you all. Should it be hearing or should it be meeting? It seems like it should be meeting. But it may be specifically in that way based on prior discussions.
I will. Please.
Yeah, you take public input at the meetings.
Hearing starts. Any questions to that, what procedure?
About hearing?
Yeah, I think, like a meeting is what we're going to name, one has.
You want to show it, just being possible.
Yeah, but we routinely have items on the agenda that are not public input. They are at some point.
All right, now pushing to grab an application. We have a program that they shouldn't play. Now it's the hover.
Right.
It.
Right, I'm just saying that the, that, that, that the entire process, you can make the argument that a hearing is more specific, because it's only asking for public input, where a meeting could have public input as well as administrative function. So I would make the argument that the word meeting is a more correct term than hearing, because it, it has, you know, but I, I get Aaron's point, I guess it could imply to somebody that the public doesn't have the ability to speak. But, I mean, we could also put that in the definitions if we really wanted to, and say, you know, meetings will have an opportunity, the public will have an opportunity to comment. Uh, but I think you put that in your announcements anyways, Dawn, I'm sure. I thought that's
Three, two.
Some verbiage kind of like that in the announcement.
The thing that drew me on this was that it's, it, all of a sudden it references the hearing, but it doesn't say a hearing is required. So it seemed inconsistent. In advance of the hearing, talks about noticing requirements, so that's, it seemed like it was hang, hanging out there. We do indicate that public input will be taken, um, but it's not required necessarily, it's not.
Yeah.
For traditional stock. Or for meetings. That we found, uh, the popularity of, uh,
It still is an interpretation of the word.
Yeah.
You know, to me, the interpretation is meeting is more general than hearing, hearing is more specific. So I would be, I like the word meeting, because we do some administrative functions that don't involve the public input. Where if you had a public hearing, I would think that would be rise behind that hit where it would be a public hearing. So, uh, that's our, our.
What does the town council call, when they, when they present this, when they do? They call it a hearing or a meeting?
But I don't, I don't think I understand the question, so this is specific to a land use permit? And.
Anything we send to them and they approve it, and then they'll have a public.
So if you want to amend the ordinance, there are specific public hearing noticing requirements.
Yeah, that would be.
So many days in advance, twice in the newspaper, so this says public hearing, but it doesn't actually say what the requirements are. It just says at the hearing with no other reference, so it's unclear.
So as an example, we get down to this. We have I'm going by all the government, trying to review the, 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 I'm going for all. We have a work age to do this.
And the state mandates those departments around, um, modifying your land use ordinances, those notification departments, we follow them and they're made, mandated by the state. Whereas this is not, this is whatever your preference is.
So how many want to stay with here?
I think I do. I, I, I gotta believe somewhere back in state, in the statutes.
It references that.
It's got to reference public hearings.
I called them actually, and they said it's town by town, because I thought the same thing, because all of a sudden it references hearing with no other, it seemed like it was dangling, and they said it varies town by town.
So if we adopted the hearing and we brought the notices, you'd have silver hammer, something, something hearing for every meeting?
Every.
What I says. Or, yeah.
Correct.
Well, with your.
Well, I guess if you're going to have for an application, it's going to be at a public meeting, if you're going to require or hold yourselves to a public hearing, if you could just state it in there. Um, the board shall hold a public hearing, so it's nowhere in there does it say, it just says at the hearing, but it doesn't say you have to have a public hearing, just needs to be more clear. Am I clear?
Well, it's weird to plan agenda. It doesn't say it's meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we would have a public meeting, which is this meeting tonight, and if someone brings an application and we're talking, but we have a discussion amongst the board, and then we say, okay, we're going to open this up to the public hearing component now for this particular application. So you could have a hearing within a meeting.
I feel like meetings of public hearing implies that it's just a public hearing, not that it's, and public hearing is part of the meeting. Uh,
More of a push.
Yeah, the only thing I worry about is, like you said, Brendan, if it is in state statute, then are we going to get ourselves in trouble if we change that part?
Yeah, and I just went back to our not good conduct, but, uh, one of the documents that we'd gone through earlier, and it jumped right out, and the first thing it says is the planning board shall hold a public hearing within thirty-five days. Uh, planning board conditional use permit, application process outline. Within thirty-five days of completeness, the board must hold a duly noticed public hearing. So if we're going to change it, we, we might need to go back into different documents.
This is. That's very bad.
Yes.
Describe it all.
So are we leaving it off, or do we go?
I think we should, because I honestly.
Otherwise, it's a change.
Yeah, otherwise we have to change it other places. If we've already referenced hearing in the document, we just leave it as hearing.
I'll pick it in the morning. Aaron, I'll make it in the morning. If you were leaving hearing during an awkward meeting.
Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to note, code enforcement officers struck specifically in it's the applicant who, who provides the abutment notices. We had talked about that some.
Yeah.
Right now Deb's doing them, but this is suggesting that the applicant would provide that.
For a moment.
Do we need to make a motion if we're not changing anything?
Um, I'm.
Oh, sorry.
Other changes. Back.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we leave a hearing in place and not replace it with the word meeting.
All in. Motion. That should be both places, yeah. Right? Both of them.
Yes, sir.
But you're okay with the applicant doing the abutters notices?
Yes.
Okay.
I am.
They do.
I remember you specifically saying you.
Burden should be on them, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's silly.
Well, I think I seem to miss the one that we did. But that could be a really suspicious situation. If you have an abuter that's favorable.
I think all we're trying to do is to make, put the burden to notify the abutting property owners that an activity is going to, that they're, they're.
I can imagine.
Make sure the neighbor build that like.
Waring guy, I think, going, notice all the neighbors.
All he's got to do is come in here to the town, look at the town tax map, write up a letter that we give them, and send out the letter, that's all he got to do, and I don't have to talk to anybody.
But I mean.
And they'll give us a list of who they've noticed.
Actually, a thing, talking to them, saying, I think you should come up with a strategy and say, we'll notify the abutters for five hundred dollars. Well, I mean, why not? I mean, if we're going to have Deb or somebody do that, we, you know, put a cost down and say, we'll notify the abutters for X amount of dollars.
But should we say that needs to be in writing?
Well, it says the code enforcement officer at the end is that the code officer will, will make, shall maintain a record of addresses. So I, I think they have to get the addresses from her.
But that doesn't mean they can't go door to door and tell them. Then you get into an argument, did they or didn't they?
Yeah, you have to have written, yeah, yeah, they'll have to have, uh, yeah, mail return receipts or whatever to show that they received.
You know, I think it happens here, but what happened with DEP and we we had public notices for, uh, licenses in the unit I work in. We require that uh, certified letter be mailed to each abutter uh, or whoever was required to be notified, typically the abutters. And that the applicant provide us a copy of the the, and receipt of, of the certified letter. Now, that's, that's a fair burden for you know, some of these projects are pretty small projects, but uh, particularly if you might have a lot of others, you know, again, depending on circumstance, and you might have you know, you might have three or four or whatever, you might have a third or something.
Well, it's also, it's also a way to really irritate your neighbors if they don't like going to the door, because certified mail, they have to have somebody sign for it. So they go to your door, go to your door, go to your door, and nobody's ever there. That can get a little annoying for a homeowner as well.
Can, can I ask a question? So there's, there's certified and there's return receipt, are they both signed for? So we're, uh, there's certified, and then there's return receipt, but are they both signed for? Cause one.
No, return receipt, the post office mail, the U S post office officer mail delivery person says, I delivered this letter to this address.
Yeah.
That's the return receipt, there's no signature required, certified mail, you have to sign, they will not deliver it. They go back and back and back, and then they might even give it a little stick in, and they might go back later, but they they can't give you the receipt until you actually get certified man.
Seen both of those done, I wasn't sure which was which.
But again, you have a contentious situation.
What are we doing now? What does Deb do? Did she just send a letter? So we're not requiring anything different, we're just saying that the applicant's gotta do that versus.
Yeah.
The town.
Right.
And to Don's question, he's saying, should we reference in here, like on a form provided by the town or something like, as opposed to leaving an open ended, we stopped by and told them?
Do it in writing, and that's a good idea for one.
I don't recall where we were asked to approve of this. If somebody didn't want somebody to be at meeting and just left them out of the notice. How how are we gonna say, oh, I mailed it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, I mean, the other option, if we're gonna go down this road, I know we discussed it, was just increasing the fee to say if the town could be doing this. Whenever it's notified, required, the town should come up with a fee and say, you have to pay for us to make it though.
And the fee schedule is on the agenda tonight.
So that's one that we would potentially, in my mind, if if the town is going to be, I think it's reasonable to notify the butters. And if we're, I I don't see the downside if the town does it as long as the town is paid for it.
We accept liability.
We have to though, because like Darren said, if if it just knew that neighbor wasn't gonna be happy or they had to sign a return receipt and they just refused, it could get really ugly.
All and all I'm saying is if we overlook somebody and don't send it, then that comes back to haunt the town, not the.
Yeah.
So put the burden on them, let them do it.
You want the original words or you want?
I would prefer applicant.
If we need applicant, we we're gonna have to add something at the end, though, it's gonna have to have written documentation of what was sent in to who on one day or something like that. They're testing that they sent this on this day to these people, period. And so list is coming with Mark, I would say that goes back to him as well.
I thought was an oversight, I think that should be changed to planner.
That's fine, it could just be the town of town appointee or town official, it doesn't even have to be specified. Town appointed employee. I don't know, we had a spot, we made a motion. I know, uh, I'm I'm torn. I'm on the fence, so.
My two cents would be, we we keep it regardless of the planner or the or the code enforcement option has that notification process, and we deal with it in this in a P schedule. And that takes away all the issues that Aaron's talking about, you were talking about. Uh, try something being skipped, they go there one on there. I think that most applicants would order to do that one. Take it off their shoulder. Well, you know, not everybody's good at making letters, sending them.
It might be appropriate to do a uh a P schedule to include X amount per per notification required. If the town has to send out four notifications, you know, I don't know what the fee might be, three dollars per something, you know. Twelve dollars if it's, ten notifications, thirty dollars, you know, so.
Yeah, we could, cause it is five hundred B, I was thinking, you know, like a hundred dollar fee and then X number of dollars per notification after that. So, you know, because the the town's gonna have to hold the liability, the town's gonna have to write the letter. Then then we gotta build the mailing list, the actual mailing part, whether you're doing three versus twenty, it's not gonna be that huge. It might be slightly different, so I could say, cause you gotta pay for stamp and envelope and paper, so.
Yeah.
You know, you could say a three dollar. But if you just said a hundred dollar fee plus three dollars per uh notifier or something like that.
And you're telling that people are already angry that they have, yeah. Because, you know, and then you say you gotta pay an extra hundred dollars.
If it's something that they need to notify their neighbors for, I have no problem with charging them for it.
But this would only apply to planning. It's not like every permit they.
No, yeah.
It's just when it comes to planning.
Right. Okay, I will change, I'll throw something out, see what you guys think. I said the town official, not code enforcement officer, not applicant, we're gonna say the town official. Um, so notify the owners, the butters, yada, yada, yada. Um, yeah, that's it, everything else stays the same, and we gotta change meeting to hearing.
I'm not even sure why that's in there, as the assessing department has all the current addresses.
Yeah.
Which now we're gonna have that digital system. I'm not really sure why that. So we, so we create the list now, and we keep a copy of that list. We, and it gets put onto mailing labels, and that gets kept in the official record. So do you want to call that out? Like, this is calling that out specifically, saying we're gonna keep those in the record, which we already do as a matter of course, I don't know.
I think we should, because then 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 it goes back to what Brent said, if a mistake was made on the town's part, we're all the liability for not over.
So, should we, could we just say the town shall maintain a record of the addresses?
Yeah. But I was thinking town official, I mean, just, I don't know, technically the assessor and you and Deb all work technically at. But I just thought town officials that way is generic enough, that somebody that works for the town is gonna be doing this. Maybe if it's the town clerk or whoever gets delegated that job in the town.
Well, even if you set the code enforcement officer was, uh. The CEO may see that it's done, but may not actually do this, prepare the list.
Yeah, we could put CEO or their designated.
Yeah, that that sounds very striking.
Second.
She's she's back on, she keeps getting kicked out, but she's not in there now. Jamie, are you in favor?
I am in favor, yes.
Then we'll take care of the B instead.
Sixty-five. At the back, that's it, I assume you reviewed all documents. And now back to regular voting, shut it.
I I do have one last comment, Mr. Chairman, back on page thirty-five, I picked it up as you skimmed through, yes, sir. The note on main statement solid waste laws, I think applies to the previous paragraph on uh disposal of uh debris and stumps, so I think that, the the section says note, state of main solid waste laws, that should be struck as well.
This note should be eliminated.
I believe so. That is a motion.
The.
Uh, so what do I, if I opposed that one part? Do I, am I just opposed overall then, or how does that work?
It's up to you, but.
We voted that and that passed.
That passed, so you're voting on all of them for other changes.
Yeah.
So I would say not, right?
Okay, then not, yeah. Whoop, breaking up.
All in favor of what we've done tonight?
That's me. Yeah. But, and yes, and no. You know what I mean?
The next step with this one. What in the age, should I be on that meeting or?
No, it wouldn't be after that.
Wow.
Yep.
Alright, it is now be forty-three, the next rule is.
Is it me?
Reviewing and accepting the definition. I would like to refer just to do. We've shut a lot of. Are they agreeable?
Well.
No.
I I had a lot of questions on these. Uh, so I wanna make sure I've incorporated definitions from other ordinances. And I wanna make sure that that is something you're all agreeable to, because ultimately, what I'd like to do is to put all the land use ordinances together, and I provided samples of um or examples of other community table of contents. Um, so you could see, they put their subdivision and site plan. Let's see, town of Manchester, Waldeboro, and there was one other one. So I wanted to see if you were comfortable with that before, because as we move forward, we keep talking about site plan regulations, and I've got some different things together. But I don't wanna start merging them together if that's not the direction you'd like to go. I guess, yeah, I guess I didn't expect an action on the definitions, I'm a little um feel unprepared.
Could I go a quick comment in? Uh, I did not get a copy of the of the proposed definitions, I didn't look at that. I I know, I wasn't asking, I was saying, I think I'll leave, but what? Uh, anyway, but what I was going to suggest, what I have done a few times in the town, what I've been kinda questioning definitions is particularly like in the shoreline stuff where we've got a lot of the state records on it, but go back and look at what the state definition says. And see, that's probably gonna apply to us on verbatim and uh, it's not a bad idea if you wanna adopt a definition. And sometimes terminology for for that is, you know, look at the state, see what they've they've done. Uh, and, yeah, and and really looking, looking at the town ordinance is certainly helpful too.
Well, the other.
I I would tend to look at the state first.
Yeah, it's always just making sure that, I mean, it's not absolutely critical, but I'd hate to have a lot of definitions in our definitions that didn't actually apply. You know, if we just copied the state, stuck it in, and there was a whole bunch of terminology that we didn't use.
Right.
Would that have a tendency to confuse people or just, you know, kind of beef up our definitions without it?
I, this is why I'm not ready to move forward on this, because we have definitions, we have uses in the parking standards that are not in the use table. We have some definition, we have definitions that aren't in the use table, so I wanted to get all that clear, because there are definitions that could be struck that aren't currently be, or ones that need to be added, if in fact they should be in the use table. So I feel like this is a little bit circular between the use table and the definitions, and once you hammer that out, that can go along with the approval of or the suggested can um amendments to the council that you just looked at.
So, uh, the intent at this point
You don't want to start that tonight? I'm just kidding, I know you don't, but what I was, what I was referring to. What I was referring to a moment ago is, so this is your table of contents, it's the zoning ordinance. And then, so it's Manchester, there's copies of these that were in your packet, Manchester Gardner and Waldeboro, if you look at their table of contents for their ordinances, it's inclusive of subdivision and site plan regulations um and some other uses that you have separate ordinances for, so ultimately, for if we head in the direction to have them all together, then your definitions are in the same place and you don't run the risk of having different definitions and different ordinances or duplicate, you know, duplicate efforts, so it's my recommendation that we move in the direction of what these towns have done. But, so I have put those definitions in the ordinance, but I don't wanna go any further with any of that, if you guys don't wanna go in that direction.
There's a, you know, we wanted to, we weren't, we started to make a need. You're now modifying the base documents all the time. So if we were gonna go down that, what I would focus to make these some appendices of the existing documents, so that they're in it, but they're attached as a separate line item. Um, that that way it's a better living document, and we're not updating the core part of the document, we're only adopting appendices. And they would have their own definitions in them. So they wouldn't have, the core definitions would only be the core ordinance, so right now they exist as separate documents. I'm saying I don't have a problem basically having it as one document, but they are essentially appendices in the same document rather than merged into the same document, where they're section fifteen and sixteen and seventeen. And now all of a sudden, you know, we end up with exactly what they have, a document that's hundred and seventy-nine pages long. And anytime you pick it up or try to deal with it, it's that big, and you have to deal with it as a whole, not as individual items. Whereas appendices, we would have a vote and say, okay, we're gonna vote to repeal appendix J and replace it with appendix J, cause we changed it, or add appendix X, cause we've added a new ordinance. And that would be, to me, a lot easier to move forward, rather than trying to integrate it into the document and make sure all the definitions are updated every time, I mean, that, just just understand from a from an editorial standpoint, that is an absolute nightmare. Every time you added a couple of new definitions, you had to go in and edit this definitions, that is a nightmare.
That's all I know how to do, so that's for me, that's where my brain works, but.
Letting know, the definitions, I'm sure, when you look at their ordinance at a hundred and seventy-nine pages, I'm sure their definitions are very long, and I guarantee there are definitions that are not in there, and I guarantee there are things that they could put in the definitions that aren't even in their document. Just because it's so hard to get those right.
Mm-hmm.
I've just seen too many times when we write a lot of technical manuals, just telling you from experience, it gets ugly really quick if you have a big document.
So you're saying these definitions are.
Yeah, and then we have separate definitions for each independent. Right, and and essentially, this you have to look at this definitions. And this definitions could actually not even be incorporated in the document, it would be an appendix in this document. So it would be its own standalone document, but this is just for the, this is the definitions for the town of Winthrop ordinance, uh, bill, general ordinances only, that's sixty-four pages we just did, and that's it. That would be an appendix, because. That would be an appendix, because then again, if we had to update it, we could, and it'd be easier to update. And then I would suggest that we have each other document. Um, be standalone, but as an appendix, and they would have their own definition, I think it gets really cumbersome. If we write a few new definitions and then we put them in this massive definitions like the library.
Well, the mining, uh, did have that, already had this one back.
Right, so it is a solar ordinance, and now referencing them in two places by picking them off out of that ordinance and putting them in here. And I'm saying, keep them separate, because they only apply to those ordinances. And because, I mean, they could actually say something very simple, but mean something different. Because of the use in the document. So I'm okay with having two different definitions that are very similar, but slightly different, because of the way they're used in the document. That could be the case, you know, how do we define a school, very different than the marijuana ordinance versus maybe the zoning ordinance. Right, the application would be slightly different of how you define a school. Because we do, we actually do that, you know, what is a nursery school, what about a daycare, what about, and we define that very clearly in the marijuana ordinance. Because we wanted to make sure it was very clear, cause we were told by the town council to make it clear. But that's not in our building or our general ordinance. That definition.
I hear you, I'm getting my head around it, so here's an example, our table of uses references marijuana, the ordinance is for cannabis. So technically.
Change that word, yes.
Yeah, so just, I just feel like. For consistency, they're all land use, but I hear what you're saying, you. I hear what you're saying, and it's a pleasure of the board.
Uh. What, what I have to mention, one thing to Greg, uh. Really. In agreement, that's more or less what we've done anyway. I think traditionally, and, and I agree. That, uh. But where you get kind of a name difference is. In, we have the general ordinance, and then we have the individual like. I don't know, whatever you wanna call it, marijuana ordinance, or the cannabis ordinance, or mineral extraction is in, in. The general ordinance definitions. Have a definition, one definition. That leads to that ordinance, so if it's gonna be mineral extraction, that's. That's how the definition should be, or if it's gonna be. Cannabis ordinance, or the marijuana, whatever it's gonna be called, have that. Name of that ordinance basically in that definition. One time, that's it, because. And, and that, that should. You know, obviously correlate with. With the, the reference to language we have in there that. Uh, timber harvesting ordinance repealed, well, by this define. But. Define what timber harvesting. Is, but it was repealed, or, or the mineral extraction was. See the, uh, see it's on the ordinance, but. It'd be consistent with the name, but it only had it defined one time in the general ordinance definition. And not needing to do all of the. Individuals definitions. On the other ordinances, but you're right, it's gonna be a factor, so.
It would be very hard, well, every time you wrote a new ordinance, you have to go add those definitions in, or an alphabetic order.
And, and, right, and also that's keeping the ordinance as an appendix itself, frankly, too, right? Absolutely, which certainly can be. Uh, could be easily done that way, you don't have to. Send the whole package back to the board every time.
That's, that's, I guess, my thought, my thoughts, is that you'd have to go to the board to approve. The core package every time, that seems like.
Because if you, if you're updating. The mineral extraction ordinance, for example. And to require some. Additional definitions. Uh. Or. Any change that's gonna change the. The, uh, general ordinance definitions, then, you know, you submit. That one's. The mineral extraction will be repeated, basically. Basically, uh. Ordinance. Uh, out of it.
I would say we would. Uh. So, come on, let's make sure we've covered what we want covered, guys. Uh, shared with us the people who you.
If you could look at the definition of shore area. To include, if you could look at the definition of shore area from those definitions. If we could just pluck that one out, because that is applicable to what you looked at tonight, the rest could be set aside.
I'm, I'm not sure, I don't remember exactly, but. And if. I'm thinking, uh, I might have gotten that one. Uh, out of a state.
Oh.
But. Um. It's been a while since I did that, I don't remember exactly.
Didn't, I didn't look for a state reference, I can do that, I can, I can remember what I put.
I think I looked back through the. Uh, the Jeff Wanda's and guy, and I think that's where I came from. I'm not gonna promise that, that's true. And I didn't bring chapter one down, would you?
So where are we all at?
Do, do you have? Are you gonna have a quorum? Are you gonna have a quorum for a while, or is everyone burnt out?
What's the warnings? Carry on. We're moving to the weekend.
Well, I think he's getting, gonna be fond to, one advantage, five tennis runs through it, throw out some numbers, but not, not finalize it, just. We're all to the boss.
I think that's just.
And I'm assuming you got some of these numbers for Mark that's kind of a standalone.
Correct.
Okay, you can add the list. Yeah. Well, I'll show where.
The reason this came up. For me, at least, since I've been here, was because the mineral extraction operation, the ordinance was talking about a fee. And that's one of the things you'd have to remember to change, um, and so. My thought was to put it into the. Fee schedule. So we created a mineral extraction operation, and then started to pull the other ones in, and Mark said he hadn't changed, you know, them in a while, so. It wasn't one specific thought process, it kind of accumulated. And so, but, but I noticed when I put them all together, that the wireless communication facility fee is twenty-five hundred, and that's in the ordinance. But the mineral extraction is two fifty, so. Something probably should be changed.
Well, I think it's. Voting solar sys, solar generating systems going to two fifty. Windy, wind. Energy systems going to two fifty. I think those are. Substantially larger packages and. Need to be kind of upstaged. And I guess I, I, the septic system permits to go from two fifty to two sixty-five seems like a very. Minor update, most everything's going up fifty percent, and that one goes up. Two percent? Anybody else think that's a little weird? What if you have, that seem reasonable, Aaron?
Who are you?
Is that, is that fees set by the state? I, I don't know. I would assume it's set by Mark.
I, I don't know, actually.
The portion of that, I have.
That's phenomenal. Yeah, and I know their portion's not getting smaller, though. I was thinking, should we go to like three hundred for that, you know, just to make it a nice rounded, you know, maybe not as big as you agree, but make it an end. And the reinspection be. It's kind of crossed out twice, are we going with seventy-five? Is that? What are the fees intended to cover? Town, I mean, processing town personnel, like some, uh, septic systems have to get submitted to the state and the whole process for that, so there's. You know, copying fees, handling, you know, mailing fees and all that, so. Some things are different, um, but basically it's, you know, the town's. Time, so a lot of this is to recapture Mark's time to do these things. Fill out the permit.
Building permit was twenty dollars, twenty dollars?
Yeah, going from ten to twenty. I think that's, that's reasonable, those, you know, that's just a. Those are kind of reasonable.
On the first one there, I'm assuming there's a decimal.
Yeah, I'm assuming that decimal stays, yeah. That's gonna be. Sense of.
It's a good time for me to, and I don't, I might have told you this before, but the ordinance does not call for the. A notice to go into the newspaper, requires, we just looked at that section. Um, whether it's gonna be public hearing, public meeting, and it calls for notice of a butters. But it does not say it needs to be noticed in the paper, so when that paper over the winter went away. So did the noticing in the paper, um, it goes to. Everyone who signs up for the E-list, it goes on the website, it goes on social media. Uh, but we are not currently putting those in the newspaper.
State. The anything, so I'm pretty sure when I took my class. I mean, boy. It does mention that.
When, well.
Misremembering.
Yeah, they, they told me that it's based town by town, that the state doesn't require a public hearing, but it's town by town. So as far as the noticing requirements, and I, I mean, I can go back and double check that, it was a while ago that that had come up. But I. Currently, there is no newspaper. Local, so it would have to have been the, um. Kind of a journal, right?
Yeah, okay, this is.
Remember our numbers? Nine, uh, fifteen cents per square foot. Forty dollars, forty dollars. Two five, twenty five, ten dollars per sheet. Three hundred dollars, thirty five dollars. Seventy five dollars, ten dollars. Fifty dollars. Hundred fifty per watt. A dollar per year, another dollars. Two fifty, two fifty, two fifty. One hundred, one hundred, twenty five hundred.
What's the letter of certification?
Somebody's market's a request that he certified that everything meets all the codes, it's this really broad, um. I don't think it's that common, and I don't really think it's, he can't possibly state everything meets every code.
Feels like it should be ten thousand dollars.
Right?
It's like we need an insurance rider for that one, that would, that would, I think that would be a.
A new development. Request the one under.
Like a certificate of occupancy, or?
Something for the bank.
Something for the bank to say, okay, yeah, you've done all you do, diligence with the town.
Does issue them.
From the town to tell them that. Yeah, you've, you've met all the requirements to get this permit, and now you.
I mean, if that's the case, I mean, Mark didn't change it, I don't.
And he has a template, I believe, that he uses.
And it's probably, yeah, it probably doesn't happen often.
That's the most of them. Oh. I think I'll make the most of walk out the door. Just, all, all of this stuff he's done, Mark, I have not evolved in that. So I don't feel really. Uh, that I need to wait, uh, you guys do a great job. Thank you, Mark, thanks for coming. I'll make a motion to the door, right?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
We'll see you next time, baby.
Yeah, yeah, let me know, uh, we need to go for this, Jeff, and then. Beyond that, it's a both my favorite.
Good night.
Thanks, yeah.
Bye, Ed.
Almost anywhere.
Yeah.
Good reading, Alvin.
Yeah. Is it?
Also. I'm going. Well. Any county, state, or main, I know where it's. I'd be one of the bad, it was the same thing.
That is a state's thing, just because.
Well, you say, you say, well, you see how, you can, the state says this is the. Yeah, town can go over, but nobody, anywhere, and like. Goes over twenty years. Okay, and I would suspect that.
Yeah, it seems like.
Number increase there is probably. Will happen everywhere.
Do you want me to just check on that and leave it as?
Weird for. Oh, Winston's the only town. Were you on a septic system?
Septic system permit. Will go to the two sixty-five.
That's what Mark, I think that. There's more to behind that than. Yeah, just a random.
Yeah, and thirty dollars is the amount that the state we got, so.
Yeah.
Agreed, you know?
So that request for hearing noticing fee. That would be a good place to put. Whatever that. Fee is, is it per butter, is it, is it fifty dollars plus X per butter?
Which one you're on about?
Under, if you scan down planning or zoning board request for hearing. Slash noticing fee.
Not a plant, it butters, and so do fifty dollars plus three dollars per. Notification.
That would cover the posted.
That's, yeah, just the, the actual printing of the letter and, and that kind of thing. So if they did, you know, ten or fifteen notifications, be an extra thirty or forty bucks, but that would cover all the stamps and the. The extra time, but fifty dollars just kind of as a base. Planning and zoning board field notice, notification fee fifty dollars plus three dollars.
So it's always been there, there was just never a. A, uh.
I think I put it in there. I think I put it in there and forgot about it, right now.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the numbers that. Are presented there with the exception of. Adding to the planning and zoning board request for hearing notice be fifty dollars plus three dollars per applicant. And that small wind energy systems or meteorological tower. And solar energy generating systems be changed from one hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty.
For a second. For a second.
Say that again, is small wind energy, solar energy?
Yeah, both go into two fifty.
Fifty, the same as mineral.
Same as mineral extraction.
We're gonna answer one more time, fifteen cents per square foot, one, one, five, five. Ten dollars per sheet, two fifty-five, thirty-five, seventy-five, ten. Fifty dollars plus three dollars per. Hundred fifty dollars, hundred dollars. Hundred dollars, two fifty, two fifty, two fifty. One hundred, one hundred, twenty-five hundred. You get it right? I recall, I have a second.
All seven.
All in favor? Oh.
We have a little discussion?
Sure.
The wireless communication facility, twenty-five hundred dollars, where did that number come from?
I think that's a state. I gotta think it's a state one.
That we're collecting twenty-five hundred and passing it back to the state?
Give it all state, I guess that's not us. I was assuming, cause that's not new.
No, it's in the ordinance, it's in our wireless ordinance, but I, I could check on the, I don't, I can, but I could look.
Mark, we gotta give most of that, if not all of it, to the state. I got it.
Yeah, I would just like to have some clarification on what, where that came from and why it is, because it just doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
We're, we're talking about a tower here.
It says facility, yeah, so I'm assuming some kind of a tower.
Let's look at our definitions. I don't wanna drag this out, so I, I, if you wanna put it to vote, I'll, I'll, I'll go with it, but I do wanna do some research on that.
Or get an.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Wireless communication, any structure, antenna, tower, or other device. Which provides radio, television, transmission, commercial, mobile wireless service. Licensed, SMR, carrier. Wireless, do you have a wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance?
Why, yes, we do.
Wow.
Winthrop Wireless Telecomm, yep.
Yes, and that's where that fee comes from.
Yeah, I took it from the ordinance.
I was gonna say.
It was two, so July fifteenth of two thousand and four.
Okay.
This is why I want them all wrapped together.
Wow, I get it, but it's kind of weird.
All in favor? Over. Over, James? Oh, alright.
Guess you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're.
No, be James.
Your vote for James.
Back on mute.
It's bad.
Otherwise.
Can you guys hear me, I'm sorry?
Now we can, yeah.
Okay, yes, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question unrelated to that, so we've got a communications, wireless communication ordinance type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we have definitions. So we would, we have definitions, a separate definition for that.
I apologize, because I thought you guys had this, I will send this to you and there is, there are, it's a whole separate set of definitions for that.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's what we're talking about.
Yep.
So.
Just make sure I understand it.
Relatively, we're down to half of us. Got the fee schedule down, we've got the subdivision ordinance.
So those ordinance would just retype the subdivision and the street.
We've got some ordinance. Oh, go ahead.
I I just was, so as far as the subdivision and the street, um. The street ordinance, uh, street construction ordinance, they are, they are the existing ordinance. They were in a format that I couldn't change, so I just retyped them so we can start using these as a jumping off point for changes moving forward, because it's been flagged. That we do need to make changes, so. Here's where we're starting.
So, oh. Organized. Next meeting, we have a.
We have one boundary line adjustment. So it's going to be pretty much another workshop.
That's.
There'll be, uh, yeah. And I just want to know, because I feel like I kind of, um. Blindsided you a little bit tonight, so I put together and I didn't have a chance to finish it, so it didn't go in your package, but I have. I took from the comprehensive plan. Updated plan is with the state, it's the time period that they have to review, it has gone by, that they haven't officially responded, because I was going to copy you all the comp plan, um. So since that hasn't happened yet, I just gleaned out anything that was the planning board, uh, short term. Priority, and that was one of the items of, in terms of, um. Decreasing the lot sizes. So I have a table that I'm going to give to you all, which is flagged as, these are the planning board's tasks, which are short term, and that's where that came from. Tonight, when I just pulled it out of my sleeve about, um, not decreasing the size of lots in those districts. So I will give you a copy of this, I also have reference to, like, Don, you had submitted your priorities and, um. Uh. I've incorporated just comments in there, so I will get this to you with that next packet. So you can see where that came from, probably seen out of left field. You don't have it, I'm going to provide it to you, yep.
Well, basically, it's. It was a.
I need to talk about, I'm talking about what I talked to you about earlier.
I I did not mention that.
Okay.
We're talking about a particular property?
Yes.
Do you want to? Mention that, or do you want me to?
I. Mention like that.
Property on Memorial. Oh, I'm sorry. It's the property on Memorial Drive, and I've had several people ask me this. Uh, Rick, I said. Um. And I've talked to Mark about it, I think he's looked at it, but I'm not sure exactly what to come up with. Uh, I kind of suggested maybe we have Mark come to our next meeting, um.
I. He's always offering to come and answer questions, and that's whenever he's available.
Guess that's about it, I don't want to say. Too much on this forum until we find out what's going on, but.
Is it an activity that the planning board has approved?
Yes.
And I know there's a property on. The other side. Um, where Mark ceased his assist. Is that right? And they never came to us.
Hmm.
Oh.
Yeah, I.
And they, we are stumped, and even brought in Phil right to the water.
Oh, Jesus. I had to do another lot.
Well, we, we, we.
Two years ago.
Right, we had to deal with that, it took a couple of years before they got the replanning plan, we had to go do a field visit. That sort of stuff, but I just wanted to know. I I've had a couple of people ask me about it, I haven't brought it to market, but I, I mean, these are issued systems. Yeah, so I'm sure he's fully aware of what it is, but. You know, what's the action going forward, is there something that we need to do, and, but probably not until they. Give us a plan. Because they need to do a replanning plan.
Yeah, in this case, uh, you know, has to do with, uh. Imperial air, permit, permeable area. Or that thereof. And some of the other things.
So they didn't follow what we approved?
Well. I'm not sure how much got approved, to be honest with you, we, we approved a foundation for a garage. And. Turned into a, two. Huge, two. Uh, car garage. And then on top of it's another room, taking the whole area. And then it's got a. Big peak roof, so basically a cape on top of this garage, I don't, we didn't know who, but, uh. They came to us with a foundation, and I was said, but we're going to build a two car garage down the road. And. There's some things in there, I think. Orientation was shifted, and that was. Uh. Mark probably approved the garage, and this thing was, everything done on this lot was done piece to piece.
Hmm. Is this the one that went to the zoning board?
Uh, at one time, yeah.
The, the other building went to the zoning board. For high. I've been.
Okay.
Right sitting back and broke sitting back.
Yep.
And this was another building, the team providing. On second floor. And she. Yeah, and the other two, we did, um, her ability is on.
What's that?
Her ability is, it's, oh, you can't, you can't expand your, your purpose cover. Um, you know, that's, that's a fact, you cannot.
No.
So.
Um, so anyways, it's. I've got a lot of notes that I gave to Mark and he's, he's checking on, but I thought maybe. I get a little confused, we're, we're holding other people to the fire and all of a sudden we got this monstrous project going on. And we approved part of, I'm sure Mark approved the building. There was another expansion down there to the house.
So she had the single car garage.
Single car garage, the house was expanded.
And that was both, which.
One time, wow, she came to the, to the planning board and wanted to expand a deck. And. I don't know what happened with that, uh, so it, it. Lot of mystery there because of the way it was all submitted, I can't, I can't, don't have a drawing of everything. A lot of it's verbal.
And here's a plug for the finding of fact, because part of what we found is we couldn't find what was approved, like there was just such a hodgepodge of information, so. Part of your packet included, the town of York actually requires the applicant to prepare findings of fact. States exactly what you're approving, what the conditions are, so. If you could just take a peek at that from this conversation, what is that?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's why we really pushed that, you approve the package, it's not complete, we don't want somebody showing in with a. Sketch and then they verbally describe the project and we approve it, because then it becomes very hard to prove exactly what we approved.
Yeah.
Well, this was a sketch. Yeah. About all the buildings were on.
But I'm sure they were missing, yeah.
Oh, that was back when we were still.
Right.
Uh, the mentions, we don't know.
Right.
Interesting that, uh. Uh, new building. It is forty feet from the road. Building's twenty four, which didn't include any overhang that I could see. And then that building's, I guess, exactly a hundred feet from the high water line, so that's kind of odd that all those all ended up just perfect, so. I don't know, there's been a lot of complaints about it. I did talk to Mark, but I think, I think we'll discuss it, see what he's found. For future, especially for our education, I mean, I'm a little confused now as to some things that.
Well, and sometimes questions do come to us, not to Mark, because, you know, people know that we're on the plane.
Right, and they're like, on that street.
We're living nearby or whatever, and they ask a question, what is our? You know?
Yeah.
We are essentially de facto kind of, you know, town employees. By, by base.
The answer was, we're looking into it, and all made people aware of it.
Well, the intention, we put it on in general, I think, in the river. Approaching currently, we put it on in general.
Well, and have Mark comment, it's one of those, what if anything, we have to do.
I mean, I think it'd be a good learning lesson for all of us.
Yeah.
And reinforces what we're trying to do now is, uh. This was a little before that, uh, it was also, if I remember. Some of her permits were done during COVID, this one was not, I'm pretty sure that was in person, so, anyways.
There's quite a few in that file that was quit. Yeah, it was piecemeal.
Hopefully we keep in the file better, obviously, the information beginning from.
And I guess. You've explained a bit, this, this, at least three pieces, there were three steps, or three processes on that same zone. Has to be determined, it grew so. Down in the water. We could deal with thirty percent current building, and then there was the additional. Garage on the corner. Which is approved by old boards. And then the new one is going in currently, substantially there. Foundation building in all. Um, that's the third one. And that went through my work, so I think the history is a lot of bar.
How do we get to this?
Yes.
And you don't have to look at volume anymore, so that.
Right.
That's not documented because it's not criteria.
Yeah.
Right, but if they expand the footprint, they still have to shrink the purpose covers.
Mm-hmm.
That's required, because we can't make it. Non, more non-conformity. Assuming they don't own a big lot, I mean, I'm assuming this is a small lot.
Well, it's not too big. It'd be a good size, but. I agree. I did the calculations and. Just the buildings themselves are eighteen percent.
Yeah, so with any driveway structure, it's way over.
Big driveways.
Yeah, it's way over there, yeah.
Round corner.
Yeah.
Now, we're, we're gonna look at it being on the agenda next time.
Yeah. I think that'd be good. I should worry about.
This whole time I was trying to get this on the screen and it just on its own.
There we go.
So.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah. Must have been into her, not. And she didn't have a camera on, so it was just. Her. Yeah, the only way to do that is usually go over and click on. For the front.
Any other? Do I, or darkness of sun? When I'll drive?
I have that, and also I sent you an email and I will send you a link tomorrow with, I did a memo and some attachments, the council's going to have. A public meeting. At the end of. Did I say Fox Run Lane?
Yeah.
So. They have been. Granted, consider acceptance of the street. And it's a little bit unusual because the. It's was built in. Was approved in two thousand nine, I think it was built in two thousand ten, but a condition of approval was that either in the. That, I apologize, either it should be built and. The town requested the town would be taken over, I apologize in the wrong place, or they record. Um, homeowners association. That would maintain the road, and so neither of those things happened and the road's been being used, so the status, status of the road is unclear at this time. Um. So I'll send you the materials and you can see that, but the, the ordinance specifically dictates that the council would invite the planning board to this meeting. Because normally you would have just approved this application, would have been within a year, so the planning board approved it, but. Actually, Ed was on the board at that time, when I went back through, um, so if, if you can attend on Monday, uh. I think the council would appreciate it, they're not going to make any decisions that night, pardon me? Yes.
This coming.
Yes.
I did take a drive down and look at. Yes. I guess. Guess we're just seeing. The requirement. From. The chairman called us. What we actually said, an invitation you have on?
That's part of why I submitted those, um, I have what was approved, I only have full size sheets, so I don't have a lot of my seventeens, anything I can submit, submit to you digitally, but I do have. The subdivision plan, um, set. Yeah. Yeah, there's no as-built that I'm aware of.
We have a plan, we know.
Yeah, want to get them right now?
Sure.
If I can leave this, you guys can sign this and I'll go get those plans.
Sure. Uh, now. Thank you. Sure, Tim.
Second.
Very well.
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. That'd be what we supposed to do before the next working meeting, just redo this, oh, this is where we're going, those.
Uh, we can, we can through it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I may, I'm gonna, I may make some changes to the, um. Some of the lowest changes to the subdivision ordinance, help them, everybody, if I get a chance to know before.
Oh, that's right.
There's a nitrate study in there, which don't get used anymore, so I was supposed to say, no, we don't need nitrate. Phosphorus. And that's sort of covered already in a lot of our systems, so. And to do a nitrate system. House, it doesn't make any sense.
Gotcha.
I mean, it's, it's got to be almost thirty five years old, that's why she rewrote it.
I was thinking the other night and. Think I saw it in the, somewhere in the ordinances today, do we require that if someone's working in the shoreline zone that their contractor is D E P certified?
Yep. Yeah, they have to be, they have to.
Okay, yeah, we don't, we don't stipulate that as a, as a condition, though.
I think Mark does.
He may, but I'm saying, when we approve something, it's a conditional use permit, I think we should be also saying.
Yeah.
And you need to get, your contractor has to have.
Uh, yeah, I know, said that is the case. But.
Okay.
But I, you know, that was when you would hear every doubt, like, no, I, I checked that.
Okay.
They have to be shoreline certified to work in the shoreline.
Okay.
So within two hundred and fifty feet, they have to be shoreline certified.
Okay.
Four or five hundred yards out, whatever.
Gotcha, okay.
You have the schedule?